I have one comment about the minutes on the last page. The sentence that begins with designation of a reserve fund. I took my own notes and with that, when the reserve fund came up for discussion, I don't remember anything about designation of a reserve fund supporting the new administration building should continue now. What I got was that we had 34 months left on the lease and that 2026 was the next fiscal year we would vote on a building. So I thought this was a little leading as if there was full discussion going on now, which doesn't seem correct to me. And I'd also, but just as an aside, I'd requested some minutes from board discussion on the admin center and I haven't received anything. So I just wanted to make that comment that I, you know, and if there's a recording and this has been stated as such, but that I think I would have made note of that if there was the implication or the declaration that we were, there was a continuing discussion of supporting the new admin building, which I'm just not aware of that.
Well, the way I understood that was it's currently in the designated reserve fund, which we will reconsider closer to the end of the year. And the thought was to leave it as it is now. If the Board of Trustees wish to designate it differently coming up, we'll need to do that. But each year after we are sure what our fund balance is from the previous year, we redesignate.
Well, the spreadsheet was approved, but I mean, not the building.
Okay.
That's kind of how I have it.
We can put a note that says this does not approve the building because nobody has ever approved the building.
Right, right. But there seems to be this implication that, you know, we're continuing discussions.
Reserve fund supporting the new building should continue.
So I just wanted to say.
How would you like it to be worked?
Just that, I mean, 2026 is the next fiscal year we can discuss in the building, the admin building.
So we want to take the first sentence off?
It seems to me that we can say the spreadsheet was approved, but not the building.
I don't recall that the spreadsheet was approved.
Well, I have reserve fund spreadsheet is approved, but not the building.
It was approved as of June 30th, 2023.
Three.
Three. That part has been approved. Nothing has been approved since then. And to clarify, so if you wait until 2026, you don't have any options because you'll be at the end of the lease and you will not have time to.
2026 fiscal year, which we'd be discussing well in advance. I mean, when we discuss the 2026 budget, I mean, we're in '25, right? So you don't wait until 2026.
I guess at this point, we're not debating when and if we're going to take action.
That's right. We're just talking about the minutes.
We're looking at the minutes. Are the minutes correct or not? If the minutes aren't correct, let's correct them. If they are, let's have a motion to approve and move on to rest of the agenda. So Barbara, do I understand you'd like to strike the first sentence?
I would like to strike the first sentence. And I would like to say the library board would appropriate the funds, would appropriate funds as discussed in the 2026 budget, fiscal year budget planning.
Then how about the library board would appropriate funds for the project in the future after the library board approves a specific project as part of the fiscal year 26 budget plan.
What is the project?
It may be to continue the lease.
Correct.
In the availability.
So you're really doing, the project is to continue a process for the administration, housing the administration's staff.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right. So why don't you say that?
Define it.
I mean, the project is so ambiguous, if you just leave it alone without the upper sentence.
Say that again.
For what's administrative?
For housing the administrative staff.
Would you please read the complete sentence you'd like it to say?
I would say the library board would appropriate the funds for the housing of the administrative staff in the future. It might be a, whatever, could be a big new building.
We're going to put a period right there and we're going to strike the rest. And again, somebody probably ought to go back and, the recording is on the, on the website, I believe, and will confirm that these are in fact going to be accurate minutes and not what we thought we wanted it to say, but what was actually said. That's what minutes are supposed to do.
Mm-hmm. Fair enough.
You're here.
Did Kristy put the minutes for your pass?
As I said, the meeting was recorded. The staff reviewed the recording.
Gotcha.
And do the minutes.
So the staff did the minutes. Okay.
I move to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
John, just as a point, we may want to put somewhere in here that the staff completed the minutes. In other words, somewhere in here, who wrote the minutes? I guess is the way to put it, just as.
Sure.
That's always a good idea. Yeah. I don't think it's a problem. I just think it needs to be there.
Tom, you want, once you finish making that note, you want to talk about the committee needs to, you know, you've started working on some of the dates and tasks we need to review.
This is kind of an advanced chart version of finance over the year. Green refers to budget. The orangish color is audit and then gray is designation of the reserve fund. Just kind of going through on the different processes. July through September, the library board is normally working on developing its budget. Sometime end of September, end of October, the board would approve their budget request to the localities. This is not approving their budget for the following year because you don't know what funding you're going to have. Hanover generally is requesting budget information in October. They have a fairly large budget. They are usually able to wait until after the October meeting for us to provide that That's sort of the start of the process and it normally goes through December, but the localities are not on the same time schedule for that. And then from January, and it can take up to June, the localities have a budget process taking place. They all have a date where they have to have a budget approved for school funding.
Has to be by the end of April.
By the end of April. But that does not always mean that our budget request has been considered enacted upon.
Yeah, they could just approve school and drag rest out till June.
So, once you have that information from the localities, in the May-June timeframe, the library board would come back together and approve a budget based upon what we know to expect for funding for the following fiscal year.
So at our last meeting, we talked about perhaps meeting every other month and then no often is needed. So for the budget development, if we're asking that the Board of Trustees be in position to start that discussion in July, we probably ought to be having that discussion in June. Does that fit with what you're thinking, Tom? Or early in July.
I think, I think early in July, just there's, there's plenty already happening at the end of the fiscal year to be trying to time that out. I think one of the oddities here that happens to us is that normally there are only meetings two of the three months, July, August, and September. And when, which has happened occasionally, if one of those meetings doesn't take place, you know, this following, sorry, this past year, we didn't meet in July, the August meeting didn't have any time to discuss the budget, you know, it, it just needs, it just needs time to be designated and followed. So I really do think you could do that with a finance committee in July. That would, that would help. So whenever the board is meeting, we've got something prepped, you know, for discussion.
With the intent of approval in September, right? Is that right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, in my world, we'd be able to talk about it in finance, take it to the full board and have some discussion in case there's feedback and then approve it the following month. Not necessarily, you know, expecting, here it is, approve it.
Right.
But can we make sure we're including everyone's concerns?
So do you think we're going to have an August meeting and not a July meeting again this year?
I think the, the logic last year was that schools are starting earlier and so it wasn't as difficult for people to be in a later August meeting and a lot of people went on vacation in July. And so that was why we bumped it to August.
So maybe if we anticipated a July finance, the full Board of Trustees discussing in August, finance coming back in September, making adjustments potential that need to be made and then the full Board of Trustees approval.
In September.
In September to make that request. So we're looking at a July and September finance committee meeting. And then if we stuck with every other month, that puts us in November, which is probably when we need to be following up on audit at that point.
That is correct.
Because we would have been looking at July, discussing audit in July and September as well as budget and hopefully nearing completion in November. So July, September, November, finance committee meetings. And then back in January, that seems to fit with your timeline here. And then if we jump to March, you're then potentially in discussions of starting to know where localities may end up in the budget. You've at least given your presentations probably to most of the localities by then and starting to get some feedback. So we meet again in March. And then in May, we would have, everybody would have approved the budget by then, I hope. And we would know where we are to be able to recommend any adjustments that need to be made to the full board, either at our May meeting or certainly by our June meeting to adopt the budget for the upcoming.
It makes sense.
And combine the May meeting with designation of the reserve fund process.
Yes.
That'd be good.
Does that seem to track for everybody?
Yeah.
So we'd be looking at July, September, November, January, and then a March meeting. And then May. So for all practical purposes, we sort of have a February slash March meeting now because we're, I don't think, converge March.
Yeah, it's close.
So we're somewhat on track and maybe our next meeting would be in May. What are y'all's thoughts on that?
I think it sounds good.
Before we adjourn, we will set a date for a meeting. Do we want to do that now or do we want to move on to the agenda and do that again?
Look, I'm going to say maybe wait to see how you want to do it.
Okay.
It's up to my wife.
Okay, so I think some of our current discussion items will lead to wanting to do that, maybe a little bit. Okay. All right, well, let's move on to discussion of the financial policies. I hope everybody had an opportunity to review them. From our perspective, there are a few things that need to be addressed probably because the process has changed over time, but the document hasn't.
Yes.
And then there may be some other things folks want to talk about as well.
So how are we going to do this? Are we going to read through?
Well, hopefully folks took some notes. I did on mine and I guess we could start at the beginning and see where we get.
Okay.
We may or may not get through all of it today.
To start.
We'll do a start. So, page one.
I have a question under page one, 2B. It says the librarian's recommendation. Does that mean director? Is it, should it be director?
I think it should. I think it's inconsistent throughout our policy. Someplace it refers to librarian.
Okay. I just wondered if I was missing something.
Someplace it refers to director.
So I would change that to director.
Tom, is it your belief that's the intent?
Certainly in this position, yes.
So there's a couple places where you see librarian and I just kind of figured it was supposed to be director, so, okay. Now, in general, I'm assuming that this policy was approved before Hanover became the fiscal? Okay. So that, I mean, that threw a fire a lot of changes.
When I saw 2021 as the approval date, the update date, that was for.
For the PCI compliance.
PCI piece, but the rest of it is not.
Right.
Yes. So when I get to the next page, I started picking up all some things that needed to change because Hanover is now the fiscal region.
Right. And I mean, even so much as the accounting policy background, you're addressing the accounting methods used basically by Hanover, right? I mean, don't we have to indicate exactly what accounting methods we're referring to? Because as the fiscal agent, they direct all the methods of accounting and management? Am I correct on that?
Kind of, I'm going to say yes and no because I really think that both the librarian and the county are governed by the Government Accounting Standards Board. I mean, you know, they can't, neither of us can be too far out of, out of that for all of these.
Right.
But you are, you are correct. That was one of the things that, when there was this discussion about, you know, putting our things into Hanover's financial system that were not addressed before the change was made.
I guess I'm making the assumption that Hanover's procedures and methods would be under the umbrella of the approved governmental procedures and such. But I just thought that throughout, we have to either rewrite or continue to reference the fact that they are the fiscal agent. I'm not exactly sure how or when we do that, if we have a special workshop for writing or if there's a rewriting draft or.
I think sort of timing being a big part of everything, that this is probably a question that it would not hurt for me to take back to the current auditor to ask them how they, how they would like to see this happen so that we're not spending a lot of time to come up with something that isn't.
Relevant.
Yeah. As appropriate.
And just to kind of let you know, timeline as far as policies go, one of the things that I'm going to ask this time is to work with staff on taking one policy and creating a template for us as far as formatting goes, layout, you know, what the structure. So, you know, if you're not through this today, it's, you're not, you're not behind the eight ball.
Well, I'm wondering if we're premature to do this exercise.
Right.
So staff and the auditors have had an opportunity to, but maybe that's the direction is that we need staff and the auditors to look at these policies and provide a graph that they think meets those requirements and then we review that and comment on that.
Okay. I mean, there's just.
We're doing this today because that was the directive from the Board of Trustees meeting. The chair wanted us to do this before the next meeting.
Right.
And I don't think there was time to do that before the next meeting.
What we can do maybe is just flag some areas, like item number five is pretty much obsolete, right?
Yes.
And so much of this, but how would that work? Would, would they, let's see, would the auditors work with us or do they just make, they would go through it and they would make their recommendations and we look at what they recommend? Is that the best way?
No, I don't think so. You have to work with staff. Yeah. The auditor will work with the staff.
Auditors work with staff to put together a new draft of financial policies and then we look at it and we, okay. Yeah, I think that, because we, you're right, we would be kind of spinning our wheels here because really they need to look at it.
Because I don't know what the Hanover process is.
I don't either.
Exactly, exactly.
And I don't need to know what Hanover process is. I need to understand that it meets all the.
Standards.
Standards that it needs to, but I don't need to know the ins and outs of it.
Correct.
But our staff does.
Yeah, yeah. And it needs to be clearly and hopefully simply written in the policy so everybody can understand.
And it needs to be broad enough that as they tweak it internally for whatever reason, we don't have to go back all the time and amend the policy.
Right.
It said they're going to add three paper clips instead of four paper clips to something and we said they were only going to do three.
Okay. That, that makes sense to me.
Because just simply the whole check writing procedure, that's different.
Yeah.
We don't have a bookmobile anymore.
Right.
Probably can't come out. The whole investment and deposits policy.
Right.
Right.
Different.
We just need to know what you're doing now.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that is, I think that is very smart and also we won't waste our time today because basically we would be kind of spinning wheels.
And I think we, overall, we need to, and I'm sure you all do, understand that we can't ask staff in one or two months to change all the policies and come refresh.
Yeah.
We need to work on, let's work on that, let's get that like we wanted and then let's pick another, methodically go through.
With Hanover's schedule as well, we don't know, so.
Exactly.
But it's, it's good to get the ball rolling, I guess.
It's good to get everybody reading them anyway.
Right, right.
Get an idea of what's out there.
Okay.
Okay. So, item number five, our agenda, budget discussion. And set up people for overview of where we are today and what next year's budget is looking like in discussions of work.
Tom, when do you present to the boards, the different boards of the counties? I mean, do you go and like present to everybody? Have you done that already?
That part of your policies is, I think, correct from what I was reading previously and that we do it on their schedule.
On their schedule, right. I guess I'm asking, do you know when you're going to do that? Do they, have they let you know yet or are you going to be presenting soon? Because I know, I know we're in the cycle.
Sure, yeah. So, no, I don't know specifically. King William, they have scheduled a date in March for outside agencies. I doubt very much that we will be presenting in Hanover unless something changes because I've not heard anything and that has not been unusual. Goochland has been a sort of a frequent flyer. They normally do have us present, but I've not gotten a date on that either.
Okay. I was just curious.
And Goochland's a little different. They've been doing the town halls the last several years and I usually try to attend the town hall meetings in case there are questions as, as a, sort of as a courtesy to, to be there for that.
Okay.
I don't really recall there having been questions in the years past, but I've been to a lot of those.
I'm sure you have.
Well, it's a little off the order of the agenda, but while we're talking about next year's budget, are you hearing any feedback from localities yet?
What we have heard in Hanover is that they are probably backing away from 5% merit. We had heard that they were going to three and then very quickly turned around and we're back at four. I think there's, it could end up at five and it could end up at three, you know, but four seems to be where they are likely to stay, I would say.
Okay.
And our budget will be adjusted, you know, to match that at some point. Similarly, in King William, they have said that any increase is an issue. What, I didn't hear you. Any increase is likely to be an issue based on the sort of longer process. The previous Board of Supervisors lowered the tax rate, which created a hole, and the board that was elected is different and the board that's elected does not expect to change the tax rate to cover it.
And if that happens, level funding within King William County is going to be an issue for any of the agencies that get funding from that.
Yeah.
Their 1.3 million and all.
How, what was the, what was the rate last year, John, King William?
I forget what the personal property tax rate was, but what the budget was built on is not what they, they approved it and then they came back in the fall and they lowered it. And they were planning for one year to cover that with fund balance. There's a new board in place now and there's a different strategy.
True.
But they have a personal property tax rate that's not sustainable. They won't sustain their current level of spending.
Out of ignorance.
And they pledged they wouldn't raise taxes.
The difference in the tax status of the three counties and how that applies to the payment of the library staff, is that a problem?
I don't know that it is. That's, the, the tax, the tax rate isn't really something in terms of like an equalization. Partners are different. I don't, I don't think that that is really the important, you know, factor going into things.
The only reason I asked that question is last year, I, I know that being in Hanover, much of what you do financially is gauged on what the county is doing financially. And so the three counties are different in how they're dispensing and, and supporting, is that causing an issue among the spectrum of people within this organization?
Where it does tend to impact is at the branch level in operating hours, because that's what we can adjust to keep everybody paying their fair share of the shared services and understanding that each locality pays to operate the branches within its locality.
Right.
That's, that's where the adjustment has to come in. And two years ago, when King William was not going to fund the request, there was gonna be a significant reduction in hours at the branches to cover that. We were successful in getting King William to fully fund the request.
Okay.
Excuse me, not quite fully fund the request, but pretty close.
Yeah, they're funding what they needed.
And library hours stayed where they, they should have been.
So do you anticipate anything like that this year, this coming year?
Well, if you've, you've approved a budget request to cover anticipated expenses. And so if, if you do receive the money from Hanover to provide, let's say, the 5% raise, and you receive it from Goochland, and you don't receive it in King William, I mean, you can't pay the staff here differently.
Right.
So your costs go up, and the only way to cover that is, you know, they have enough money for, you know, making it up at nine tenths of the year instead of ten tenths of the year.
Right.
We have long held that if you want to be a part of the regional library, you have to fund the shared portions. And then what do you want to do, you know, locally? We're seeing that right now. King and Queen is not funding operating their branch right now. Hanover's paying for six branches right now. We have lots of flexibility within that, but those, those costs are those costs.
Well, I'm just trying to anticipate. I mean, things, things that I've seen in the brief time that I've been on the board, it's just like the, the, how are we going to handle the extra day after Thanksgiving? All right, are we thinking far enough ahead where we can handle those kinds of situations now as you're planning out your year? Whether it's financial, that's a financial decision too, right?
The holiday is, I mean, it is a financial decision, but it also, I mean, it's also, it's also like a morale issue too.
Right, you can handle it even, I'm not saying that we can't handle it. I just want to be able to be, I want to be able to know what I'm handling.
Well, I think we discussed that, that we would make that decision much sooner than the last minute, like we'll know.
Even as we're talking about this budget, I think it's important that we understand that those kinds of situations, if we can anticipate them as far as this in advance, then we should try to make arrangements as we prepare a budget to handle them. Rather than what you have to do, are there other things that we can do now or be involved in that decision? I thought it was kind of a little rocky as we handled it the last time.
And we talked about trying to do it in like June, you know, try to really talk about what some of the possibilities would be with adjustments to the schedules and how we would do them. I think you had asked that we would move it up.
Well, I mean, to, and to, but to do that in, I mean, to do that in June and to make, to make a decision in June where the localities have not is, it is also, yeah, is also sort of problematic.
It is not unusual for localities, and not just the ones in our region, but others to November or December to start feeling generous about leave that they weren't generous about when they set them all. And what we're gonna, staff's doing a great job, let's give them an extra day off, but it sounds good. Nice to do, it's appreciated, but it costs money.
Right.
And when you have three, currently four, locality doing it differently, if we're trying to be consistent, it's kind of hard.
Okay.
Well, and, and, you know, all, all, all of the localities have a much higher majority of full-time people. So if they decide to close, it's not changing what they spend. If you choose not to reward your part-time staff because they're not working that day,
That's right.
It's a, not, it's...
That's a morale issue.
It's, it's not a good look.
That's right, that's morale.
And that was, I mean, that's kind of, I think what finally convinced you this year to go ahead and, and do it. It's not a huge amount of money to be able to do something good for yourself when you have the opportunity to do it. To do it in, to say you're gonna do it in June will probably raise the ire of more than one county. You may wish you hadn't done it. I also think that this is the year that it's a lot, less likely to happen. Last year was the last year of the boards of supervisors' terms in all four counties. And politicians tend to be more generous in the final hour than they do in the beginning hour. So it probably isn't an issue this year, but we'll see. And sometimes it just depends what the calendar looks like.
I was gonna say, we can look at the calendar in the fall.
Yeah, we want to look at the calendar.
And just make an educated guess, like discuss it and be prepared.
Be prepared. I like, I like that.
Just be prepared.
Trying to make a final decision in July makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, we can be prepared and make an educated guess.
The only thing worse than that is trying to inclement weather.
Right.
No, there is that, there is that.
You can't do anything with that.
Ice and snow.
You have to handle that.
Yeah.
Tell my employees, I can't tell you which one of them know how to drive in snow and which ones don't. If we can get the parking lot safe, the building open, they have leave, they can take it if they need to.
All right, sorry for the interruption.
All right, so we covered sort of the status of next year's budget requests. Where are we this year, Tom?
This is the June, June, January, I'm sorry. Board report, budget report. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
And you can, you can see that, you know, we're just over halfway and we've got a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of numbers in the 50s. A few things much higher and a few things much lower. There are, you know, a number of anomalies and things that we're watching in terms of knowing that we're going to need to amend in the future. I have an agenda and I've lost it.
I've got two or three, you want one? I literally, I have printed one.
Um, I mean, just, just kind of going down the list in terms of things that we know we're gonna want to amend. This, the federal aid line, I, I have to ask Ken about that again. It's actually, he's had that in there for a bit. No one's asked him questions. When we were applying for the emergency communications funding, that was, that was a very long process. We had applications that were approved, we had applications that were denied. We have a consultant for those that helped us file, and they actually appealed one of the ones that was denied. And so we've got additional federal funding in this year. We got another, you know, almost eight grand. And the company, our consultants on this, it's a flat rate. They're not charging us anymore to do all of the extra work for this. It's, which is part of the reason we use them, but, you know, that's, that's extra money in there. We know that state aid has increased 70 some thousand dollars. You know, so we, we know we have some things to work with, to change, and that kind of goes back to the calendar. It certainly is staff's preference that we not be in a state of constant change with our budget, that we, we try to do something in that latter spring period and just amend it once. Sure, and that was, you know, sort of the March, April period. I think this year it would probably be wise that we maybe hold on to doing that later if we're able to. We've got Montpelier as a pretty major project, capital project. We've got West Point as a major capital project. Rather than trying to, you know, set some numbers today and then have to change them, I think it'd just be wise to wait. One of, one of the things that is approved and is not in the budget is the support for the, what, for the West Point building. We're, we're spending those dollars, but we're not, we don't have them formally in the budget yet. One of the numbers that we currently don't think that we're going to need is the 175,000 dollars from the reserve fund appropriation. That will probably just end up staying in there. But it is slightly early to pin these down.
Okay, so you're thinking maybe May rather than March or April?
Well, and I'm kind of looking at the finance committee's schedule too. It might, it might be easiest to hold off and do it in May. We do not want to hold off and do it in June, but also does not have a good look. We're gonna, I guess we'll see what happens here when we get to our schedule. There's, there's just a number of things that, you know, we clearly are paying attention to here, so.
And just refreshing my memory, that expenditure refund is Montpelier staff, right? Is that what that is?
It is not.
It is not, what is that?
Expenditure refund is money that is returned to us that we have spent for our internet connections through a federal program.
Oh, okay, so returned to us from, from who?
From the federal, from the federal government.
Oh.
It's E-rate.
It's E-rate, schools and libraries. It has always been labeled expenditure refund from before I came, but that is what that is.
Okay, because I remember we had about that amount from Montpelier or something. We were saving that much money then, so now expenditure refunds.
I think what you're referring to there is the expectation that in next year's budget, when we're not paying rent, that we'll be able to retain that funding for rent from Hanover, rent from Montpelier, then going to staff at Montpelier to help with the expanded space.
Okay, so this is from E-rate from the federal government, okay. And that's an internet?
That is internet connectivity today. Years ago, it included telephones. Took that out.
All right.
And Tom, are we on track with funding from all our localities?
We are. The, the King and Queen number, particularly the percentage, I wouldn't really look at that. I almost printed it without it because I felt like it was funny money. I mean, we know, we know what they're doing for the year, but it's not reflected in the 139, 894 that was in the original budget. If you remember, some of you weren't here to remember, but we, we needed to put some money in with the expectation that we were receiving money from them so that we could also then spend money to provide the services, however long that was gonna go. That's all been, been firmed up, and we'll be able to bring you back a much better number when we, when we do amend. But their number is not quite make believe, but it was at the time.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a budget thing for next year. One of the, the other things that we have very good expectations for is that there likely will be another $2.5 million increase to state aid statewide. So we should expect another increase to state aid. I can't tell you what that will be with any accuracy at this point in time.
Now, what, what makes you say that?
Because there were budget amendments in the state legislature that went through both the House and Senate and been approved, and they're the same.
Okay.
Is that the issue?
Is that what we talked about last time? About the 2.5 million increase?
Well, it was 2.5 last year as a, as a request. So that's a number that has repeated.
So keeping it, is that part of the surplus that was left over?
It is not.
Well, this, the Senate amended the bill to 5 million, right? And then the House lowered it?
That's in the legislative session in 2023.
Okay.
Last year, and then this current year for next year's budget, you're saying there's 2.5 million increase on both sides?
Correct.
And that's the state aid?
Correct.
Which?
Which our portion of that, we don't know what that is yet.
But that's mostly used for books and materials?
It is.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Anything else on current year budget?
Yeah, can, this is, this isn't, I guess this isn't budget and... I feel like it fits here because we've talked a lot about the financial reports. A couple of things that have been sort of floated, let me pass this one this way. Talk about these real quick. Put, like, put this next one on top of what you just got. So there was sort of this request about doing a deposit report. And so what you have is actually the January one, although it's labeled December. Obviously, they, they did the month, they did the year and not the month. Apologies for that. But these were, I mean, these were some of the questions that were asked at the January meeting, you know, did you get a King and Queen payment? You know, yes, you see those. You can see Dr. Hamels, $97,000. You can see on January 26th where we received three fourths of the year's state aid in a single payment that had been being held in lieu of not having the audit on file. that had been being held in lieu of not having the audit on file.
Oh.
Not particularly a problem in terms of cash flow because, you know, we have the cash, but it's, you know, it's, it's come back. And, and so an unusual month, January, but eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in, in deposits. And then if you go to the second sheet, the fund schedule is a report that we have been doing for several years. It, it kind of goes back, I think, to your question about the balance sheet. It's, it's not quite a balance sheet because the balance sheet really is in the audit and includes things that are outside of the finances. But as of, um, you know, January thirty-first, you know, prior month balance at the bottom of December, that goes up to the top. You have income, it's, it is broken down here in terms of eight hundred and thirteen income. And I've been getting Ken to change it. It's, it's not necessarily interest income. It is really, you need to consider it as an investment income.
So unrealized gains, sort of?
No, these are realized gains.
But it's not just interest, it's from all of them?
It's not just interest, yes. It is a gain that is, is, is being booked.
So these are, these are from the investment though of those resources, correct?
It is from the investment.
And it's not all interest.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not all interest.
So, but it's still unrealized unless it's sold, right? I mean, they're booking it as if this is the value, market value on this date? Is that what, is that what this is?
The, the, these are investments that are not, it's not necessarily like, you know, it's not a share of Apple that you have unrealized gains until you sell it.
Okay.
These are other investment vehicles that, that pay the money back. And it's sort of, sort of more akin to a dividend.
More akin to a dividend, okay, gotcha.
I hesitate to use that because that might not be the one.
The exact, I, I understand what you're at. I, I see what you're getting at though. I do, I understand.
Yeah.
That type of return.
That type of return, thank you. And then our, our expenses for the, for the month, and then we have a new number here at the end. But I, you know, it is, it is a fairly large amount in, in January. The other months are gonna be months where we're receiving Hanover's contribution, I believe. But, so this is sort of like the balance sheet. And the deposit report was sort of, I mean, it was requested. And then.
Yeah.
So move, kind of moving forward for the full board, if this sort of becomes the, would we do this as the financial packet? Or so we're not?
Yeah, as part of the financial, this is very helpful.
And so these will go on the consent agenda? Or do you wanna, do you wanna have them off of the consent agenda briefly so they are?
Maybe the first time, let's do them off the consent agenda so we can talk about it.
Okay.
Talk a little bit about what they are and what they say, yeah.
That's fine.
But then I think from that point on, it probably will end up on the consent, consent agenda.
Very related to the, to the board's budget report. Thank you.
You wanna talk about reserve fund?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
This is, this is pretty up to date. The crystal ball part, the gray part, I wouldn't focus too heavily on that, but the twenty-five, FY, what says FY twenty-five at the top. The June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, that was approved. The, I changed that for FY twenty-four and I put passed over on that. Your eight months, you know, sort of out of date to be going back. The financial statements have already been drafted using what was passed on six thirty twenty-two. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be done now. It would be better that it is on, on six thirty and is up to date, on six thirty of twenty-four and is up to date there. The money kind of moving through this. There, there was, uh, estate money added during FY twenty-three. There is some surplus. We're generally running about a hundred thousand at the end of the year that we have left over. Start to get to the point where you have less than a hundred thousand. And it's pretty nerve wracking where you're gonna come in if you're, if you're less than that. So. That is generally held. And the same thing is kind of happening in the FY twenty-four column. Ken actually thinks that we're probably under a hundred thousand, probably eighty thousand dollars less surplus at the end from our operating. But we have also gotten some contributions that will likely go into the committed category, so. And you can see that as we've moved through. The amount for Atlee has increased to two hundred and sixty thousand. The amount for Ashland has increased to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We can kind of true up on the hundred thousand for the admin rent, but that is what it averages a year. And then we've kept the other categories the same. And the number that kind of floats is the amount for the admin office space. The designation of the reserve fund and having money for that, for the office space, whatever way you're gonna do that, I guess, I mean, if, if we are doing something, if we're trying to buy land and build, that's gonna take the longest amount of time. If we're trying to buy something that would be existing offices and, um, you know, perhaps renovate, that will take less time. If we're staying where we are, the longer you wait on that as a decision, then you're most likely to, to cost more, just inflationary. The landlord will be anticipating increases. I don't think that you should anticipate that it will be a hundred thousand moving forward unless you're planning to sign a very long-term lease.
At one point a while back, you made some kind of comment about the, um, that Hanover said that they might have office space in their complex. Is that still a solution?
Yeah, they don't have space, but they have been anticipating building more space there.
Gotcha, okay.
And the conversation was about combining us with the other function. Just build a little bit bigger building and have, and have us back up on the campus.
Okay.
Is that still going well, that discussion?
That has not been an active discussion. And given the amount of change, you know, that's, I guess it's still a possibility. But that would be, you know, that would be back with the idea that we'd be expending part, part of the reserve to, to pay for the construction, so. And I, I think my, my biggest concern is that if you're gonna have us be, be moving, the sooner that we know that that's gonna happen, the better because it's very ugly when you're trying to do that in a hurry. And, you know, you lose, you lose the, the negotiation power of saying, well, no, I'm, I'm gonna walk away from that deal.
Why, why should you go there? Walk away.
So. So, I, I mean, I think, I think there's lots of discussion on the actuality of that to come, which is great. I guess, you know, the question is sort of, as we move forward, are we okay to keep the money in that category, knowing that the discussion is in the future? So, and, um, sorry, this kind of fits to you. I was able to look through, search through some minutes.
Thank you.
There is, there is nothing particularly definitive in what I saw. But I do think that the board members that were there had the understanding. Page one in the second paragraph, funding for the consolidation will come from PRL reserve funds. Hanover's saying they're not in favor. PRL administration's planning for a five-year interim plan to lease a building or part of the building for new facilities until future building plans can be finalized and approved. So, this is where we were looking for space. Hanover was well aware multiple times. To the point of, I had another conversation with Mr. Bideski before the lease was signed, saying, this is what we're doing. It's a hundred thousand dollars a year, basically. We're, we're getting ready to do that. If there's a problem with it, you need to let me know now, so.
And here you are.
Here we are. On page two, number four, let's see, that, that changes. Lease three to five years, then move to a permanent facility. And maybe, and maybe that's some of the, um, vagueness of it. Is there isn't, it's not like we have a set of blueprints.
Right.
You know, we don't have land that's purchased. It's, all of that has to come. And, and, and you'd have to approve the expenditure of any resources for any of that to happen. But, you know, it takes architects quite a while. You have to do an RFP for your architects. Then you gotta see how, you know, what are they designing? And do you think you can afford to build what they're designing, et cetera?
Just out of curiosity, what is, okay, I, and I, I'm not speaking for or against anything. I just want you to understand.
Yeah.
What is, what are the advantages to building a new facility as opposed to renting a facility?
You're, you're expending rent to pay for the service and your costs generally will be higher than it will be if you own the building. And, you know, owning the building, you're retaining the capital asset. If you, you know, say for the sake of argument that you're renting the building for ten years at a hundred thousand dollars a year. If you bought a building at seven hundred thousand dollars, and what will you sell it for at the end of ten years? You know? You will still have maintenance costs. In either situation, there'll be pieces of the real estate that you're supporting for the landlord if you don't. What, you know, what's the flexibility? You know, I guess if the, you know, if, if the library shuts down, you may have to pay the lease out, but you'd be done. And you'd have to sell the building as an asset.
Certainly pros and cons to both.
Right, right. Just curious.
Yeah, well, I mean, sort of, given, given the idea that the library has existed for more than eighty years, having a horizon view looking seems to make sense. It's not like we've never done this before, kind of deal. You know, we've, we've had to have a space. And you do have to kind of project for, you know, what, what will you use? We have, we have, we basically have one space, one office space available as an extra right now. But if we were to have a second full-time person that we would hire, where you put it?
Yeah.
And, um, so you gotta, you know, kind of look for having some of that flexibility.
And when you design your own, you can design your own the way it needs to be rather than saying, well, this is what I've got and let me see how I can carve it out, you know? So, I, you know, I'm like you, John, I can see advantages and disadvantages to both.
Yeah, it, I mean, neither is gonna be a pain to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But. There's a little bit more in here. It's, I really only found something useful in a couple, three meetings and what I had the opportunity to look at. Good one to have in for you here.
All right, thanks. It's good.
I guess questions about the reserve fund, if there are?
Sure.
Concerns with how we have it laid out?
So Tommy, you anticipating that you would be asking the board of trustees to reallocate or confirm reallocation again once we have the fund balance for the current year? Can know that?
Um, I think that would be a good time to look at it again. I think that we are kind of closing in on a window where if, if you have the desire to be trying to have space that you own, we would need to, we're gonna need time to, time to shop or if we're doing, if we're, well, shop for land, shop for a building, shop for an architect.
You're right, because I mean, you're taking potentially three to six months to get an RFQ out for an architect, select somebody, get them working, probably a year to do a design. And that's if you know where you're gonna do it.
Right. Or then look for a piece, look for a piece of property that will fit when you designed. Rather than wait for a piece of land and then design around it.
And our lease is up when?
I believe that it's up in twenty twenty-six as the future admin. Future admin rent is flying out.
September twenty-sixth.
September twenty-sixth. So in thirty months-ish, it's time to start.
It's time, it's time to start if we're going to.
That's what we're gonna do. We need to decide what direction we want to go. If we're gonna continue to lease, it's probably a little early to have that conversation, but maybe not. But if we're gonna look to buy something or build something, we probably need to be.
We're in a, we're in a three-story building that was, I would say, more than half empty when we leased space. And it's maybe got half of a floor that's available at this point. So I don't, I don't feel like I'm in a strong bargaining position. But.
Well, this discussion is also part of when we formulate our five-year plan. I think this is really part of it as well. Which I can't remember when we said we were gonna start that, but.
Yeah, but when we started?
When we started?
We're gonna, we're going to, the initial start will be in March.
Okay, yeah. Cause I, I think this is really a part of that, the five-year plan, kind of, important.
They're all related, kind of, and you have to have a little understanding of all, all of it. of it.
Okay. Unless there's further discussion on that. Tom, where are we with the audit for 2023?
Um, so, we had a phone call early last week with, with the audit team. Ann Schaubert was on the call with us. The, the audit firm had last week as a week to work on our stuff. We had good discussion. We have a set of statements drafted, like more fieldwork has taken place here in the last two weeks. There is a wrench, 'cause they, when we talked to them two weeks ago, we were talking about finishing by the end of the month, which is like, perfect. We received an email from them, I think, I think that came Monday. We, Ken and I spoke with Ann Schaubert this morning about it. After all the discussion about the capitalization of hotspots, chrome books, and you may recall there was an email from Hannover's Finance about they've talked to MERS, they're not gonna be looking at this stuff.
They're gonna do that again, yeah.
MERS wants us to capitalize the library collection and depreciate it.
Hmm, really?
Yeah. And.
But not hotspots?
Well, you're already doing the hotspots, 'cause they were done last year. Ann felt that MERS was being very cooperative about this. She kind of offered, if we wanted to try to argue against it, that we could, she'd help us do that. I don't think she, she did not feel like it would be successful, and I feel from reading the message that I don't think it will be. We're back into discretion on materiality, you know?
So, what is, what does that look like, capitalizing a library collection?
Well.
Is that doing inventory? I mean, is that what it comes down to?
See, that's, so, can I, can I, I talk, I can talk to everyone I'm standing? I know, oh, you have a mic board here, I'm sorry.
This is getting serious.
Well, it is.
Oh, then we stand enough.
Because you've got the, you've got the financial statements, right?
Right.
And then you've got library operations.
Right.
And what you're asking questions about is exactly what sort of, you know, makes my hair go gray, because, like, the auditor's email, they're talking about, well, and then your disposal, so you'll dispose of things, you know, everything that you bought, you'll dispose of it in, in year six. It's like, we don't, that's not how we manage the collection, we don't do it that way. So, these, what this really looks like is another entry that we're looking year to year in the financial statements. It's, it's not particularly gonna reflect or change what we're doing, for the most part, in operations. We have some questions about that, but it looks a lot more like, the library has, for the sake of argument, we have 200,000 items, we have 230, but zeros are easier to add. And each item, we're gonna say, is, I mean, 20 bucks a piece to purchase. And we can go back into what we've spent on physical items, you know, this year, and come up with, you know, we'll, we'll average that out, and so we'll have a net gain to assets in '23 for whatever we purchased that year. But we have to go back and do this for six years as part of this '23 statements that we're, been working on. There are a lot of, there are a lot of unknowns, but I think that what I'm saying is pretty generally correct. The, I have my notes from me on the phone call this morning. It's, we're gonna have to have a restatement of the capital assets, and I got very nervous about that as a phrase. But what, what that means is there will, in a footnote in the '23 audit, we'll be saying, we've gone back for six years, for, you know, like, '22, '21, '20, '19, and '18. I think, I think '18 is the end of the six-year period. It's not, it's not doing anything with any statements that were previously issued, which is kind of how, when you say restate something, I'm worrying, you have to change a lot of stuff. And I was assured that that is not the case. We're gonna have to change whatever is in our, and this is a section of the policies, the financial policies, that we will need to keep the capital asset piece, because our capital assets and Hannover's capital assets, I do not compare, they're 20 times bigger than we are. So, our policy needs to stay separate. And the policy, one of the things that, if you read it, it doesn't talk about the collection being a capital asset, so we're gonna have to have some wording about that added in. And that part of the policy, at, I guess, the very least, what I was told today is that we probably will not be able to issue the '23 statements until we have the capital assets policy updated, which is why I'm saying, well, maybe this is a good time to just double check with MERS to say, how do you, how do you think this should be? Sitting here today, I think one of the roadblocks I can see what that is, I'm not sure that they're gonna say that it's okay just to refer to that you're following Hannover's, because the next thing they're gonna ask is, what kind of agreement do you have for that? And maybe the supplemental agreement will be okay? And maybe it won't. When we went into Hannover's finances, that was, that was my big concern to you all here is, do we need to be doing this this quickly, or can we not wait and put together, have an MOU on the front end, so that we have agreement about how this is gonna work? And I was told we needed to do it moving forward. So, if that's not an issue, great. If it is an issue, I, you know, I don't know how long that might take. The supplemental agreement has a good chance of working, I think. So, we're looking at doing a five-year schedule. And really, what they're referring to is, I said, disposal, they're really talking about it just coming off of the depreciation amount. You know, if you, if you bought books in.
Five years ago.
Five years ago.
Right, get them off the books.
Take, take it off, you'll, you'll reduce the amount that you have capitalized.
Right.
So.
And we're driving.
There's some discussion about doing that, whether you would do that in, what Ms. Schaubert said was, you'd like, you could be, you could choose to do that in year seven or eight instead.
Right.
I, no, I mean, to me, let's just do it in year six, so we have, this is the periodization that we're always looking at, don't make it complicated.
Tom, are there other library systems, like Henrico or Richmond, that are having to do capitalization of their collections? And if so, could we, maybe they have a template?
Well, this has been one of the.
We might be able to follow.
This has been one of the frustrations that I've had with this whole process. So, no, I mean, Henrico does not have to do this. Richmond does not have to do this. So, the Monkey Regional Library has to do this, because we're spending $700,000 of a, about $6 million budget. So, the purchase of our books and materials meets the materiality threshold, whatever, wherever that lies, for the auditor's judgment. Henrico County Library purchases, I don't know what, 1.2 maybe, million dollars worth of materials? Well, that's a, that's budget dust in Henrico County's budget, because Henrico County owns it.
Ah, so it's a much, yeah, it's not the percentage then?
So.
Yeah, okay.
There are 94, maybe, 95 public library systems now with a newer. Of those, there are probably, I'm gonna say 15 that are 501(c)(3)'s, so they're not a political subdivision of the Commonwealth, so their audit doesn't look like ours.
Right.
Close, but not the same.
Looks like mine, when I did mine.
Probably looks like yours, right. And most of them are, you know, a subunit of the county, a bigger union. So, it leaves those of us that are in the regionals, that are the ones that are affected. And there are not, there is less than 30 regionals. I've been, I've been talking to my colleagues about this for years. Capitalization of the library collection is not exactly a new idea, maybe we should do that, but we've not been real keen on doing it. How is that model gonna look? And what do you, you know?
Who gains on that? What, what, who gains on doing that, capitalizing the collection?
Well, the, I guess I'm gonna say, the people that are interested in reading our financial statements will have greater clarity as to the financial aspects of running the operation, the library service. That's not a very big audience. Most of them understand that we have a library collection, but it fits into the standards for accounting, the government accounting standards board, and the auditing stuff. And all of this traces back to this effort to try to make governmental unit audits look more like the private sector, whether, whether we are or not.
So, who's gonna do this? Who's actually gonna do it?
Well, I mean, it's incumbent on library staff to, to do this.
Now, will Ann be a part of that, or she's only?
Well, she's, she will be assisting us, but I, and I, when I say that, I think, like, we get to ask her our dumb questions, so that they, the auditor doesn't sort of slap our hands for asking dumb questions.
Well, isn't it, and this is speaking of dumb questions, here comes the, but isn't it basically just a math problem? X number of books, or value of books, and then divide it over the years, depreciate or something?
Or does he wanna know when you bought the book?
I mean, it's just, it's, it's pretty involved math.
Well, I think, I think, but, I think the decision-making on what some of those values are gonna be, are you averaging this, or do you have to count this? Those are some of the things that we have to still work out, those details.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Ms. Schaubert not terribly familiar with, like, operations, 'cause when we were talking to her today, she's like, well, you know, like, maybe you just start putting, like, a sticker in the books that you're buying every year, that's 20,000 books.
You mean, sticker of what year it was purchased, you mean?
Yeah. She would like, she's like, well, you'd like color code it, so, you know, pink would be FY '24. And then, when you're, when you're discarding items, you'd be able to track and figure out what year, how, you know, what year they were, 'cause, so we, operationally, we, we would be discarding some books that are probably only two years old, some that are five years old, some that are 10 or 20. We don't wanna be doing that. We just wanna be averaging this stuff. I can tell you how many, you know, I can tell you how many are going out the door.
Yeah.
If we're having to track every item through the system, then yes, it's, that's not, that is, that is not worth the squeeze. That juice is not worth the squeeze to try to do that, to come up with numbers that are, honestly, nobody is gonna be very interested in. I'm, I'm not sure how these are gonna help.
Yeah, what is this for? I mean, why are we being so doggy about this?
To meet, to meet the standards.
And that standard might change if we have another accounting department.
Um, the level of detail will, could well change. And you gotta remember that Ken and I have been kind of, kind of kicking ourselves, like, sort of like, have we gotten dinged on something again? And Ann was like, no, she's like, you shouldn't feel that way. Your previous accounting firm made their own choices about this, and they were not requiring you to do that. And she's like, there's no reason why you would be trying to do beyond, you know, what you're needing to do to satisfy them. So, you know, like, but like I said, I, I get it, we can do math, you know, we've got 220,000 items, we can, we can do some averaging, we can tell you what the average cost of a book was, you know, FY '23.
I mean, if you were to go through that exercise, and they weren't happy with it, would they just kick it back to you and say, we need more detail?
Well, I think that's what we'll be negotiating, working out, as we, you know, here in the next couple weeks, we'll have to, we'll have to be going back to them. So, you know, we're willing to do this, this is what we're looking at, kind of go back and forth. They've, they've outlined something that is 80% reasonable, it's the last 20% that we're, you know.
So, what kind of delay would you anticipate this is going to cause?
Um, I'd rather answer that with some information from the auditors about how long they think it might, and I don't have anything from them. I mean, in a lot of ways, if we can kind of do it in a narrow way, you know, not, let's not be really creative, let's not be doing a ton of work throughout the year, it's kind of algebraic. It shouldn't be that long, maybe, maybe another month is what I would say, if, if, if it works out that way. If it works out that we're having to go back and forth, and we're gonna have to create really detailed processes and things, then I think just some of the discussion could take longer.
So, what's the chance of just saying, hey, we haven't done this, we didn't anticipate the need to do this, put a note in the audit, ding in us on this, and we'll fix it for next year's audit?
I agree with that. I mean, which is wrong if that.
What are we gonna lose there?
I mean, we're already behind the eight ball, it's just, it seems weird to me for them to ask this.
I don't understand why, yeah, exactly. Why can't you do that?
I think, I think Ann's opinion is that taking the punch this year by agreeing to do it is gonna be less than not doing it and being nailed for not doing it now.
And if you are nailed, what does that mean?
Well, like the previous audit.
Just not approve the audit?
Well, it wouldn't be that it wouldn't be approved, I don't think, but they would have, they would have concerns, because there are material misstatements in the library's presentation of capital assets.
But you can explain that. So, do we risk a locality saying, your audit's not clean enough, we're not gonna fund you? Do we risk the state not sending us?
Well, I can tell you that the localities are, are looking to have a, a timely audit, for sure.
Right.
So, I'm sad. What I would suggest, just is that do the math, simple, turn it in, and if that's not good enough for them, they'll let you know, but this is crazy. I mean, this isn't the best use of the staff resources, working on this kind of thing, and, and you have the number of books, the average, and over time, I mean, it's a, it's a mathematical equation that would make my head explode, but it's somebody, or there's probably an application that would do this, the amortization over six years, and just done, just get it done.
Especially when you adjusted your process to accommodate the last auditor.
Right, yeah, right.
May have been told, should have adjusted it some more.
You might tell them you'll start it, you know, from here, and then in six years, you'll be able to do it, but.
But I mean, to, to label, to color code the books, that, that's just.
Really?
Yeah. That, that, you know, that doesn't, that's insane.
That's head splitting.
Yeah, that's insane. I, I say, do the simple math.
Doesn't even make sense.
And, I mean, that, that's kind of interesting, to know the number of books, the average price of book, dah dah dah. That's basically, I think, what the general financial statement reader would be interested in knowing, and the amortization over this, and then move on to the next category.
Exactly.
I would say, in my opinion, don't.
You know, I'm thinking you would start to just say, today is today one, we got 220,000 books.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the way I would do it, right? That's the way I would do it, right?
There's the value. We'll start depreciating that next year.
And depreciate it... Well, you can do the math. I mean, you can do it, depreciate it over to 2018 and then move on. Be done with it. It's like, move on.
I think that's absolutely right.
Because they'll let you know if that's not good enough. But I wouldn't try to overdo it in the front end.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah, because, you know, it's just...
Somebody who governs...
We have X number of resources and this isn't the best way to spend, in my opinion.
Well, the auditing rules related to all of this, the only example they use is, you know, a government that owns library books. So there's like a very narrow spotlight on us. And no one has been able to give me another example in local government of something that's equivalent to this where you're, you know, you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on something that costs $25 a piece, basically.
It's ridiculous.
And they're not... I get that they're an asset, but they're really a supply, you know, 'cause we're using them all the time. You know, they're being discarded at all kinds of different rates. Yeah.
I would say, who's to say? I mean, following that example is one way. But I'd say we create... Just turn it in the way that makes sense. And once again, they'll let us know if that's not what they want. But I wouldn't... I personally wouldn't suggest spending a lot of staff time and resources on this request because the bottom line is to keep the audit moving, to get it through, and, you know, the staff's resources, in my opinion, are better spent on other library issues.
But you also believe in addition to doing the exercise, you need to revise the policy that says what the exercise has gotta be. And board trustees need to adopt that policy before they release the audit.
Yes.
So isn't there... Is there any way that we can make a motion here and carry it to the board meeting?
Yes, as a committee, you could take a motion to the board.
Why can't we, the committee, carry a motion to the board and vote on it?
On?
On this process that you're going to get yourself into. Why not do what Barbara was saying? Why can't we just say, adopt that idea?
But then the auditor's gonna reject that if we don't have some guidance as to whether or not that's gonna be acceptable.
Well, then that falls on us, not on the staff.
Oh, sure.
But do we really make a motion to suggest how to audit stuff?
Well, we have to have a policy on how we're handling our capital assets.
How to capitalize.
How to capitalize the collection?
How to capitalize anything.
But we do have a policy, the $5,000...
And I mean, I think I have, like, between the phone call at 8 o'clock this morning with Shaw...
I mean, we do on page two, right?
Times a lead for here, yeah. And so what... I think there are two changes that need to happen in A in kind of trying to read it out loud. So A would become, capital assets shall be capitalized for units costing greater than a $5,000 expenditure for which useful life of more than one year and meets capital definitions of land, buildings, improvements to buildings, infrastructure, equipment, or something like the library's circulating collection. That's the language that I don't have a very firm handle on at this point. But changing it from the useful life being exceeding five years to being like in excess of one year.
So do you think you can have that language finalized for the board trustees meeting next week?
I think it is reasonable to attempt to do that.
Let's do that.
But I think longer range, I think you probably want to go ahead and capitalize the collection. You know, I don't... My sense is, again, from talking to Ann, who has a lot more experience with this, I think, I mean, I think it's not really worth the... Not even not being in support, you know what I mean? But it's not really worth the issue moving forward if we take... It'd be better to take care of it now and...
I agree. I disagree making it, keeping it simple.
I mean, I appreciate that.
Yeah, this is crazy.
And back to one of the questions that was asked. I only have one other regional library that has capitalized their collection. And they're one where their auditor does the auditing and produces the statements. They don't write their own audit.
Okay. Well...
We shared that with Mares, and Mares basically said, it doesn't have anything to do with your responsibility to make sure that you're saving the capital assets.
Too bad. All right. So capital assets shall be capitalized for unit costs greater than a $5,000 expenditure for which a useful life of more than one year. Instead of exceeds five years, just strike that?
Yeah, you can strike through exceeds five years.
It meets capital definitions of land building, improvements to building, infrastructure, equipment, and library circulating collection?
The previous version... Well, the previous version is, instead of and, it's an or.
Or.
And so I did or.
Or library circulating collection.
Yeah, and that's... I was told not to, probably not to do it as like books, that that would probably be, I guess, too narrow.
Is there a value to the electronic?
It depreciates.
I mean, I'm wondering, are we just talking physical books here or...
Well, that's some of the things that we'll have to be looking into.
Circulating collection is growing digitally. And I'm wondering, do you depreciate digital books?
Well, so you don't necessarily own what is in the digital collection.
Right, that's right.
Some of it is licensed. Some of it, we do own. That would be a kind of head-splitting exercise, I believe, to try to figure all of those things out. And then, you know, the other service, the hoopla stuff, we actually pay them for it based on a usage... You're renting it sort of for the usage period as it happens. There's all kinds of examples of this that we're not really sure. And I'm, to be honest, I'm not really sure that the auditor's view of this and saying that this is material is based on the books are material number, you know, here for the budget expense, not looking farther down into the GL code and even next level of that in this finance system, our job codes which break it out. And so we, yeah, we need to... I mean, Ken was working on that and when I left. Just, I don't know if this is too much detail. I'm sorry that maybe it's kind of going on.
No, this is...
We're having to go back into QuickBooks, which we quit using in 2019. And our version of QuickBooks is from 2016. So like, we had to drag out a Windows 7 PC. We were able to...
It's rough.
We were able to bring it up and connect and bring up QuickBooks. And it didn't all like air out, but it is just sort of like, is it gonna, you know, is it gonna work?
Should we say or physical library circulating collection?
I would hesitate to say that and have it be incorrect.
Okay, so just leave it, library circulate, okay.
I think we can get clarification from Mares.
From the auditor, yeah.
Get their approval.
Rather than us taking language from this party to the board, why don't you work it out with the auditor and consult it between the board meeting?
And send that back to us or something.
Okay.
But this, what I'm saying here today is my understanding from the day's work, that this is the way the language...
Your understanding today.
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Tom. A lot of good information. Some of it disturbing.
Might be disturbing.
Like, this is just information, but before we kind of move to close, I'd like to hand these out. They are, so the question about what the reserve is invested in, there's... Can you hand them out and then I'll say what they are? I'll shut up.
Looks like they're doing pretty well.
So the one-pager, Ken pretty much put this together. If you would, sort of the second paragraph, which is one line, Hanover's investment policy is located in Chapter Six of their financial policies. And so that starts with six. And it goes down to the paragraph after 6.3 where it says, PRL receives... He still has interest in coming here, I apologize. But basically, Hanover has all of the investments together. They credit us with our portion of the reserve fund. They don't, they're not reducing it if we're overspending, kind of. I mean, they're like, they're very fair about that. But basically, our portion is 1.09% of what Hanover is investing.
Okay.
They're investing about $307 million. And so he kind of just did this, you know, it's cash and cash equivalents. There are money market mutual funds. There's US Treasury. I don't know what supranational is. I didn't study for that one ahead, I'm sorry. Corporate notes and bond. Apparently, we don't have any commercial paper currently. Certificates of deposit, LGIP and LGIP EM is what we were invested in before. That is a local government investment pool that is operated by the Virginia Department of the Treasury. And then there are municipal bonds. And then on the back, there are all these various investment types that they can invest in. And they change these periodically based upon advice that they get from the advisors that they pay to help them manage all of this. And then the second document, which is 30 pages, is, as it says on the title, from Hanover County Treasurer's Deposit and Investment Policy. This was signed by the treasurer that has retired. I thought the signature was in here, I thought I saw it. As far as we know, there haven't been any updates by the current position of the treasurer. But for those of you who wanted to have more information about how they're investing it, you have something to read. Yep.
Thank you, being my man, I could be... Oh, yeah, there is a signature. I'm Scott Miller. Okay.
That concludes, I think, every stack of paper I have for you.
Fantastic.
Thank you for your patience.
Lots of good information. Thank you. Let's circle back to a meeting date.
Interesting, you could point out that the rule is booked at 4:00 by another question.
Thank you. I hope to be very clear up here about that. All right, so circle back on a date for our next meeting. So it looks like our board of trustees meeting is on the 22nd. That's not right? Probably wanna do it early enough before that. So staff needs to work on anything between Finance Committee and meeting.
Is a week enough time or like the 15th?
Probably not.
I would go back to the 8th. Yeah, you could.
I'd say the 8th or even maybe the 1st if you're wanting to be generous. Updates that work for people.
I would prefer the 9th if that works. I have airport authority on you.
I can't do the 9th.
Could you do the 7th?
I could do the 6th or the... Wait. I could do the 7th.
7th, 6th or 7th would work for me.
I could do the 7th in the afternoon. Is that doable?
2 o'clock?
Yeah, where?
We'll figure that out.
Try to do somewhere fairly central. Atlee or Ashland or Danxville somewhere.
At is available.
What do you think?
Sorry.
So May 7th at 2 o'clock?
Okay, Tuesday, May 7th, 2 o'clock at Atlee?
Atlee. Awesome. Thank you, Jen.
So do we wanna try to make a standing meeting on the first Tuesday of the month? Every other month? So May, July, September, November, January, and March?
First Tuesday of the month?
Does that work for every month?
We can certainly try for that. I'll have to look, it'll take me a minute. But so first Tuesday every other month, starting with May. At 2 o'clock.
And...
Trying to put together a list of locations. See what to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. Unless there's other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's have a look.